...where you would get started, road hall, commissioning hours.
Here.
Commissioner Resold?
Here.
Judge Shaw's here.
Commissioner DuBee?
Here.
Commissioner Shindel?
Here.
Please stand in one of the seats.
We thank you for all our best. We thank you for the respite, the severe weather they have up north. Thank you for the march to your seat. We ask that you be with us through the holiday season for our safety on par. We ask that you be with our volunteer volunteers as they protect us.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Good morning, I am presenting my opinion regarding items seven, eight, nine, ten, and twelve of the agenda. Items seven, eight, nine, ten, and twelve are actually violated by the law. They do not state clearly in part what that is or what the items discussed are. For example, seven does not state why we need attorneys, another attorney for more compensation with this court, with tuition court. Going into executive session does not state why you're going to get an executive session and why you're going to have one eighty legal counsel. The attorney general's opinion and the corporate meetings act, and the very narrow interpretation of that, and it's not stated in any form that there are going to be violations or going to be executed. Select number nine, selection of engineer in conjunction with the seventy point seven, why we need another engineer. It doesn't say anything about what they will do, why they will be used, it's unbudgeted, and there doesn't appear to be any purpose to that item. Number ten, discussing county information resources agency service agreement in current county, why we need somebody that uses our website. If we do, it's never been brought up, it's not specifically delineated in that item. Number twelve, sheriff's department wants some evidence equipment, it's not specific. The commission court has an obligation to citizens of this county that anything discussed before this court is posted in such manner that it can be easily read and understood exactly what's going to happen in this court by anybody who wants to attend, and either support or not support, need to figure out among the different, I would ask, commission court to pass on all those items, so they're not violating the corporate meetings act. Which is in fact, in this one. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Debbie Carter.
So, what I have to give you all, the statute of reference, the requirements for audit for salaries to be determined by the district judge, and the fact that telling you what her salary is going to be and addressing it is simply a criminal act, and it's a courtesy to not something that y'all have to be adult in reality to do now, unless you just not didn't have other reading in the law, and the district judges didn't sign the order. But you just want to learn their acts correctly, and yet you have the right to do that. But otherwise, you don't. I mean, you could say it clearly, they're all shouts, they're all mandatory language in the statute, it's not, it's not language that can be pushed. There is no legislature basically that has no discretion to the commission's court when they broke the statute. Because it says, under eighty-four point two-one, the judges shall certify the list containing the list of auditors or staff to the commission's court, what shall order the salaries, and then y'all will, or y'all shall order the salaries to be paid on the performance of their services, and shall appropriate adequate amount of money for the purpose of their salary. So, it's something that makes us look bad when we treat our staff, our auditor, who does the greatest amount of work with the county and do most of the other employees, and it's important that we keep someone qualified, and her qualifications are requirements of her job. And the salary belongs strictly to the district judges. Cooperation, it would seem, would be there. Important thing for this body to address, not creating another area of decision, and to do that, the judges, they signed an order, ordering the auditor's labor salary, and when you don't follow the district court's orders, you are in danger. Whether the court decides to make it, whether or not, it prevents me saying, but I have the right to do so.
Commissioner Carter, next three minutes. The next items we have to discuss are approved, petition pursuant to second transportation code, settlement dispute one of class one, A, which allows the court to adjourn it and vacate a public road, the road is known as the Panamera Road, and number two, and the offer is land to the mannequin butler.
More than twenty days have passed since the notice was posted on the court house floor, it's in the packet taken. It was posted on October sixteenth, then published in the pamphlet on October twenty-third, and also posted at the location, the vicinity of the road, block number twenty-five. And also included in that packet, there's a statement from the joint landowner, three of Randy Resources, stating that there is no objection to the fact that it has not been destroyed thirty years, and it's completely overgrown with trees and shrub and everything.
Liz, I have a question on this. One, on exhibit A, that stated August thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, it has Michael Mank. Should I have him Mank, does it matter? I mean, I mean this. I know, it's not by y'all, it's by the topographic answer. But it should say Manka, I think, Mike Manka. Enters Mank, now, it has put a couple of places. Also, is it, I have this question out of curiosity, it's nine one one, maybe she had a good question. Is this road formerly known as the Panamera Road, or is it known as the X Y C Road, or something like that? Because, you know, people in this area call different roads, different thing, and I'm just wondering, which is the correct?
Actually, I've seen, it's been called the Panamera, it's a silver road. And so, I'm not sure of the form.
Yeah, but I was just wondering, y'all, if you're going to be saying it, help that.
I know, I've got questions, I've posted on the tree, you've posted on everything else, and you work with her, so I don't have any questions.
Did y'all check to see if any of the other courts of that road, Panamera Central Road, had ever been abandoned officially? The rest had been?
Well, proportion, immediately transitioned to this portion as the income, it's about ninety-seven.
Yeah, I'll commit it with the order, that is Michael, Michael Mank. I have no objection to that. I am in this road, I have the authority to vote for it. So, I'll make a motion, we approve number six, the past decision, we have to take it, on second.
Number seven, next item on the agenda is to discuss a brief dispute warrant in all the basements of this county.
I'd like most of the approved items, seven, second.
All in favor?
I have, I have some concerns about this.
I mean, what are we doing? I mean, okay, I know, I know, Mr. Bass, it's with, with his firm, and that, and he's been very instrumental in giving Senate Bill seventeen forty-seven. Now, what are we doing? What are we, I mean, we're going to get them to implement the grant, is that what we're trying to do? Because I've asked a few questions about, we hired a nice man to do something, he had an ear, I mean, what are we doing? This is all I'm going to, what are we doing? Counsel for?
You can't hear, you gotta speak up.
Yeah, I want to know.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Jim Allison, Lawfert, Allison Bass and Associates. And I was asked to be here today about the need for legal counsel regarding the duties of the county auditor, specifically the salary of the county auditor. As you know, your county attorney is charged with providing legal counsel to the county officials when requested to do so. And your county attorney, I believe, is providing you a variable service in that regard. But if you have a conflict between the county officials, then the county attorney must, under the code of professional responsibility, withdraw and not provide advice to either party unless that conflict is waged by both parties. So, in the event that you have a difference between county officials, then the county attorney cannot advise either of them. It's in no circumstances that you must remain outside counsel if you want legal advice on that, because he's disqualified from continuing to provide. So, I was asked to be here, and if you won't be too, I'm available. As you know, we're the General Counsel of the County Judges and Commission Association, and through the association, we're allowed to provide you with advice by email and telephone. Association can pay for us to come out there, commission court, and provide outside counsel in situations like this. And if you want the ability to get counsel in this matter, we're here and available for some.
This is regarding, not the Senate Bill seventeen forty-seven, this is regarding just the county auditor?
Right, yeah. You may, you're probably also aware that we were, which said, very instrumental in supporting the passage of Senate Bill seventeen forty-seven to obtain two hundred and twenty-five million in county road infrastructure grants. And we have been working, you know, with TechStop and Association of Counties and others to make sure that money is out and available to you and other counties. The formula in the bill determines how much money you're eligible for. But in order to get that money, you must comply with certain rules, submitted half efficient to TechStop, and there are requirements within the statute and the rules to get that funded. Frankly, you're one of the larger counties under that program, and there's a reason for that. You have, as you know, severely impacted by the oil and gas activity in the county. It's a great problem to have, I'd much rather have the problem than not outlawing the gas activity. But it's catching a lot of counties such as yours in a situation where you're not able to keep up with your regular funding, your regular budget, with the damages being caused by that oil and gas activity. So, these grants are being made available to assist you in that regard. And what we've tried to do in that regard is put out forms, and samples, and orders for your assistance in that regard. Many counties have also retained engineering firms, other consultants, to help them plan for what they need to do in regard to transportation needs. But we also had a request from many counties about twelve, came to assist us in walking through the legal requirements to get the grant, et cetera. And so, we have offered to do that for a flat fee of five thousand dollars, available from the grant, if you get the grant. But that's not your engineering firm, and that's not your transportation plan. Frankly, that's a bare bones program to get you the essentials to get this grant. You're going to need going forward, of course, to continue your programs to plan for and meet your needs in the long run. You need at least ten years, but we hope this problem continues, frankly, for at least ten years. And regardless, if you've spoken to other counties that have been through this, like Barnett Hill, it takes ten years to recover from this type of damage. You can't get it all done and repaired and redone, the step. So, I was initially asked to be here in case you need a request outside counsel in regard to issues regarding audit for salary. We have made the offers to assist also in the grant program, and you're on a strict timeline on that. So, I guess I'm here to help you in a way.
So, if you're hired, if you're, if you are hired to bench up, it will be strictly, I'm sorry, I hope, I'm not confusing anybody, but you'll be strictly only for the county auditor or the county auditor slash Senate Bill seventeen forty-seven, is it for both?
Usually, Mike, that's a term of measure, either or.
Because either or both. I just want to clarify for the public too, and for the commission's court too, I didn't know that, so that's why I'm clarifying.
We had a motion, is that in, all in favor? Any opposed?
Well, I'm going to explain the reason I'm going to go against, and somebody in the public can answer.
I didn't hear a word of votes anyway, I heard two ayes, and that was it.
Shall we sit down?
The only reason that I'm going to, I'm going to explain to the public while I'm voting, no, that I usually, I'm sorry, one, one second. It's because, if you're going to be here regarding the county attorney, the county auditor, right? Well, we've been, I've been doing this fourteen, fifteen years, I know you've been at it for thirty, forty years, you've been at your job a long time, so I've been here a lot, many, many, many years, and I really just think by hiring, no offense, your, your firm is fantastic, great, he's a great guy too, he's a good friend, and, but I really think that we're going to be spending money, because I've been here fourteen, fifteen years, and she's going to get, because it comes from the district judges, we have paperwork right here that is going to pass either way. So, no offense from your firm, I think that the county is just going to be spending money that we don't need to spend, but it's going to go that way anyways. I've been through this too long, to know, you know, I know better than that. Also, on the, on the Senate Bill seventeen forty-seven, your general counsel for all, a lot of other courts, right, under that Senate Bill seventeen forty-seven? But if, and you help everybody else, right? Like, you help everybody out with the grants and stuff like that, if they have any questions, they call you. Am I correct?
That's correct, that's what, if you call us, you email us.
But, I'm sorry, I do not mean to interrupt.
But I cannot prepare you to talk.
If we hire you, then how are you going to delineate that from the other courts that you're helping and we're, so you're going to help us more than you help the other ones? If you're already general counsel for everybody, how are you going to delineate that, you know, if we're paying?
As explained in our court's office, you're, you receive telephone and email consultation through the association, and your dues to the association for that, for that, that cost is about eleven hundred dollars a year, in order to have access to that service. Obviously, your dues cannot cover preparing individual documents, briefing your county, or preparing your application for that. For that, you would have to retain us, actually assist you in preparation of documents. I'll answer questions, emails for you, just like I always have, if you can tackle it on your own, then you can not spend that five thousand dollars. And there are counties that are tackling it on their own, there are others that have asked us to walk the paperwork through forth, and that's what the service would provide. That would be an addition to the consultation that you call me and email.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to let the public know why I didn't, and no offense toward you or your firm or anything, just.
Nothing. It's like, we've worked hard providing the reports and sample orders, hoping that you would be able to do it on your own. Frankly, there are counties that don't feel like they can get it together, and you know the deadlines, leave all the steps and file the application, it's February fourteenth. If you miss that deadline, you lose this month. So, we're frankly, we're not going to make any money on this program, but we want to see every county, like every nickel of this money. We don't leave any state funds on the table after working so hard.
So, the motion carries to Shelby and James against Tracy Barbour, number eight on the agenda is to discuss.
Mr. Allen, I have a question on that.
Yes, first question, Mr. Allison.
No, 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 he's not going to get to the debate over the council.
He had an opportunity to address, and I'm asking him, or I'll ask the court, then, you're going into executive session to discuss what? Is there pending litigation? The examples given by the attorney general and the statute are very narrow, and why you can go into executive session?
I'll be glad to answer that question. The statute provides two reasons for which you can go into executive session. One is to discuss pending or contemplated litigation. The second is to discuss any matter in which the open meetings act conflicts with my duty under the code of professional responsibility. If you're going to ask my legal advice on a legal matter, I am required to give you that information in a confidential communication, in writing, on the phone, or in person, and I cannot disclose my advice in public unless and until you instruct me to. I must keep your communications between you and your attorney as confidential as any other attorney does with the communications with his or her client. For that reason, and as provided under the meetings act, if you will consult about a legal matter, then you need to go into.
What legal matter?
So, number eight on the agenda is to.
You're not required, you're disclosing the posting what you're going to do, not why, and you're not even required, frankly, to post consultation with attorney. You can go into consultation with attorney at any time, whether it's posted or not.
I think you guys know what the statement is.
But you have posted it, and what you posted, this consultation, you cited the section under the meetings act, so you've been certed, and you require my.
I don't want to disrespect Mr. Cass, but I just want to get back with it, do you have a question or a comment?
If his interpretation of what's being done here as to why we're at this second step, why can't we get an interpretation by somebody else besides the one ahead, to see it in person?
So, next item on the agenda is to discuss a brief dispute, direct to session with legal counsel according to section five five one of the seven one of the eleven votes.
I'll make motion for a direct to session for legal counsel.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I have to vote against that one, and the reason I'm voting again against, again, public, it said the attorney general's opinion, the code states it specifically that it needs to be specific on what it is, and not a general phrase, and this right here, in my opinion, so many years I've been doing this, this is more like a general phrase than a specific reason, and I just don't see this being specific enough.
Because I'm not sure.
Motion carries three, Mr. Allen.
Do you want to re-charge the statute? Is that the way that's going to work? We're going to revise it.
I prefer this meeting go on in open court considering it's.
Consider it's her.
Hello?
She's going to ignore you, like she always does.
Pete.
I think Jeffrey did a question.
Jeffrey did the exact same thing, he asked that they discuss him in open court.
Why is Herb going in there?
He has a conflict of interest, are, who's protecting Lawana in there?
He just got to be in a session, because.
Yes, Jeff Fisher's the only one.
But he's an employee of the county, that's why his was.
But you're really not an employee of the county, right?
For the record, this, in my view, this is a kangaroo court. You know, if Lawana had an obligation, if they have an obligation, if they have something.
And why is Herb in there if he's not, if it's a conflict of interest? He shouldn't be in there, it's a conflict of interest, that's why we're hiring him, but he shouldn't be in there. Watch what Rickard's getting.
We don't even have time now.
I second.
Carol, what was time and time now?
We need to hear it.
Announced at twenty-five, planned back in at ten forty.
We need to hear what he's saying.
Kind of secret, is it?
Number eighteen, discuss a brief dispute, and then discuss your two thousand two thousand. There are no decisions majoring executive session.
Where's our county attorney? Shouldn't he be in there? Just does what he's told.
We've been here before, I'm showing that.
Have you recognized the sentence?
She's already talked that out of the way, Jane, she's the author of the judgment.
No one can offer a gender out of the court, no one can be recognized to speak during business sessions of court, of course, action. But what's your normal procedure? That is the normal procedure.
I'm recognizing Lawana Kepner, on item number eighteen, and she was the auditor.
This has been discussed before, the salary of the county auditor, and the last time we addressed this. Tracy, you asked a question about how high it is.
two dollars and sixteen cents, from forty-four thousand, three hundred, ninety-seven dollars and eighty-four cents, to sixty-six thousand, two hundred dollars, a forty-nine point one-one percent increase. Neither of those individuals filling those positions had proven county experience. Rosenbridge employees, males, increases range from two dollars an hour, four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars a year, or sixteen point sixty-seven percent increase, or a dollar fifty an hour, three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars a year increase, which range based on the individual from ten to fifteen percent increase, or a dollar an hour, two thousand and eighty dollars a year.
What's on the agenda for this salary? Not everybody else's.
I'm getting there.
I mean, what does everybody else's salary have to do with this?
I'm answering questions that were asked.
Who asked that question?
Tracy. One dollar an hour raise for two thousand and eighty dollars per year, a six point two-one percent increase, and the female employee in Rosenbridge received fifty cents an hour raise, a thousand and forty dollars a year, or a five percent increase, as did most other clerical female employees in the county. Barbara, you said Jim Allison, General Counsel for County Judges and Commissioners Association of Texas, told you, quote, "salary order not timely in this statutory deadline." That is an incorrect statement, as no statutory deadline exists, as indicated in A G. Opinion J C dash three six oh seven one. I have copies here of the Local Government Code, the judges' orders, the advertisements and reputations, showing that all this was done as required. Also, Government Code one fifty-two oh three one states, "At a hearing held in accordance with Section one fifty-two point nine oh five, the district judges appointed the county auditors shall set, by a majority vote, the auditor's annual salary as compensation for services and the auditor's travel expenses and other allowances. The action of the district judges must be taken by order and must be recorded as prescribed by Section one fifty-two nine oh five, and in the minutes of the district court. The district court shall certify the order to the commissioners of the court of the county for its observance. The commissioners' court shall cause the order to be recorded in its minutes. All this was done at a previous commissioners' court meeting on November twelfth. The salary shall be paid to the county auditors by monthly payments or by any other distribution at the option of the county." Such, Section one fifty-two point oh three two, the limitations on the county auditor's compensation and allowances. Except as provided by such sections E, D, and E, the amount of the compensation and allowances of the county auditor may not exceed the amount of the compensation and allowances received from all sources by the highest-paid elected county officer, other than a judge of the statutory county court, whose salary and allowances are set by commissioners' court. One of the attachments I gave you is Karnes County's highest-paid elected official. That is the county attorney. His total salary annually for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen is sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. That statute is met. Statute one fifty-two point nine oh five, procedures for setting compensation by district judges, Section B, before setting the amount of annual compensation of the county auditor, assistant auditors, and court reporters, the district judge or judges shall hold a public hearing on the matter in which parties in interest and citizens have an opportunity to be heard. Section C, not earlier than the thirtieth or later than the tenth day of the date of the hearing, notice of the time, place, and subject of the hearing must be published in a newspaper of general circulation of the county. That appeared on October second, two thousand and thirteen, in the Karnes County line. I've also given you that attachment. Among the attendees at that public hearing was Herb Hancock, Karnes County attorney, Denise Rodriguez, Karnes County District Clerk, Bob Busman, Black Rosemary Burkett, Steve Turner, Court Reporter, as well as others. Which judges we have on? If you will go to the copy of the Attorney General's opinion that I gave you, Opinion J C dash zero three six one, if you'd like, I can read it in its entirety, or I will read excerpts for you that I've highlighted. On page three, second paragraph, first full complete paragraph, finally, you ask whether the commissioners' court may amend the county budget so as to pay these salary increases. We conclude, not only in that the commissioners' court may do so, but that pursuant to Section eighty-four point oh two one and one fifty-two point oh three one of the Local Government Code, the commissioners' court is under a ministerial duty to do so. Go to the back page, and the summary of the opinion states, "Provided the appropriate public hearing is held, the necessary statutory procedures are followed, and the salary amendments at issue do not require county expenditures in excess of anticipated revenue for the budget year." Texas Attorney General Opinion number J M dash forty-nine from nineteen eighty-three at two, the district judges of Smith County may amend the salaries of the auditor and assistant auditors of the county despite the fact that the new budget year has begun."
I asked you to want to have the judges met, you said they don't have, they're not met. So you, five percent figure salary increase, correct. I was also told that at the meeting of district judges, as there was only one district judge ever, so Sykes was there.
Sykes was on, there's our department, they both be present. The statute is not safe, shall be present, all of them is present.
They both voted, and they both signed the order.
So she was not present, but she voted.
Joe Grace was not present. Correct. But Sykes was present.
Jim, I have a question. How come you both didn't ask questions? I mean, can you explain what's going on? Can you brief them on what we talked about in executive session?
Mark, you made a request that I discuss the requirements to increase the salary of the county auditor. If you can make that request, I will do so.
Then that's the request.
First of all, of course, it's unfortunate that we have differences between county officials, but frankly, our constitution set it up that way. They, they set up a very intricate allocation of power in the county government, divided that power among a number of elected officials. And as you know, adopting the budget and setting salaries is often one of the most controversial parts of your duty. In addition to the constitutional officers, the legislature has created the Office of County Auditor, and they did so because they believed that we needed a financial officer to keep an eye on the financial affairs of the county. Frankly, the Office of County Auditor is a check and balance against the elected officials, including the commissioners' court, to ensure that we properly follow the statutes provided concerning finances of the county, everything from the budget, the payment claims, to all the things of financial activities in the county. So when they set up that office, the legislature said, well, it doesn't make much sense to us to create someone to observe and monitor the finances and then put them under another county office. So they put the office under the district judges, and then they provided the district judge important to county auditor. They require a county auditor, and a county is a good size, and they said it wouldn't make much sense to put them under the commissioners' court for their salary, so we're going to provide that the district judges shall set the salary and compensation for the auditor and assistant auditor. But when they did that, they recognized that that's not a normal, how we spend public dollars. District judges don't normally set salaries and pay people and decide the budget, and certainly don't set the tax rate to fund that budget. They said, we're gonna put certain requirements on the district judges, certain steps that they must comply with before they can set that salary. And it's very similar to what they put on you when you do the budget, instead of tax rate. They said that you, they will have to hold a public hearing, they said they'll just have to give them to that hearing, and at the hearing itself, they will have to vote to set those salaries, just like humans vote, in an open meeting of the budget. But they said one other thing that thus far has not been mentioned, and the statute has not been cited, and it's the first page of the, of the ones that I've given you. They said in eighty-four point zero zero one, concerning these actions that the district judges may take, that a majority vote of the district judges is required to perform an act required or permitted to the district judges unless the law specifically provides otherwise. In other words, you've gotta have a court. And the action, in their case, has to be taken by a majority of the judges. Now, so if you had five district judges with jurisdiction over this county, and the action of three of them would be required to do any of these acts. If you had three district judges, two would be required. If you only have one district judge, then that one district judge would be the one authorized to do it.
Jim, I can't hear. If they wonder why they can't hear, it's because they're wrong.
We're allowed to talk, it's our freedom of speech.
I, I assume everyone can hear me, if not, that I can speak up a little bit.
No, we can't. When we're having problems, we turn here to the commissioners' court.
All right. It's my understanding that you have two district judges with jurisdiction in this county. Eighty-four point zero zero one says the action of a majority of them is required in order to take action in regard to the county auditor and their salary. That means, in your case, they got both of them, one is not more than half. So that's a requirement for them to take any action.
Excuse me, but I think you said you had to be a court, and that would require only one.
Half is not a court. More than half is a court. Open Beings Act is very clear on that, that if you have a body of four, two is not a court. If you have a body of six, three is not a court. If you have a body of two, it takes more than half of them to take action. So that's gonna be both of them. Some of the statutes of, that are in my handout have already been called to your attention. Note that that one does not. The legislature clearly could have said that fewer than half could take action. They could have said a majority of the judges present, but they didn't. They said a majority of the judges authorize an act. So, one of the requirements is, you gotta have a home there. The procedure thereafter also contains some requirements. Even after they hold the hearing and voted the open hearing, with the majority of them voting there in the meeting, the district clerk was certified to use their order concerning the salary. And this is something that I think you need to understand right off the bat. You don't have discretion on setting the salary of the county auditor, as you do other officials and employees. And you can't decide to give the county auditor a pay raise. Only the district judges can make that decision. If you decide she's underpaid, then she ought to have more money. You can ask the district judges to give her a pay raise, but you can't just go into the budget and amend the budget and give her a pay raise. Each of these requirements must be met to set a salary. Then and only then do you have a ministerial duty to go forward and put that salary in the budget, but not until those requirements are met. It's not within your discretion to make this determination. The Attorney General has issued a number of opinions on these questions, and I've given you some of those. I think one of the most instructive on this question is G A two sixteen, that actually concerned the vacancy of the district clerk, but the Attorney General used this statute as an analogy.
What page? Jim, I'm sorry, what page is that?
G A two sixteen, it's the first of the opinions behind the statute. The Attorney General looked at another statute in trying to determine whether this question about, do a majority of the district judges have to be present to take action, and said, well, the legislature knows how to say a majority of those present, and they can say that if they want to. But in regard to the county auditor, they did not say that. They said a majority means a majority of all the judges. So that has been addressed. The question has also been addressed, as the auditor said, about, well, what if the judges don't get this done in the regular order of the adoption of the budget? Normally, when you meet to determine the budget, to adopt the budget, set the tax rate, you take all of these things that you're required to do, they're mandated things, as you know, that you must spend money on, and there's some discretionary things where you get to decide what to spend money on. And I suspect you start with the mandated things and say, well, we've gotta spend this money, we've gotta raise and spend this money, and then if we have any left over, we'll decide what we'd like to do and where our discretion is, and we'll pay for those as well. Well, we gotta meet our mandates. And if the district judges have properly met, the majority of them have had the hearing, been present, hearing, voted for granted increase, adopted an order, and that order's been certified to you by the district clerk, then yes, you must put that in the budget, fund it, and pay it. And that's the regular order. And that, of course, gives you the opportunity to know how much increase, if any, you're gonna have to pay, so that you bill that into the revenues you have to raise in order to do it. But what if they don't meet that, that regular order? What if they set the salary at some later time when you've already adopted the budget and, and set the tax rate? Can they do that? And the Attorney General said, yes, they can, but there are two other requirements that, that must be met. Those are outlined in J M forty-nine, and that's the second opinion that I've given you. And the Attorney General said that, well, if they don't make the order, get it to you, insert a survey with certified copy before the budget's adopted and the fiscal year starts, then they can still make those changes upon a proper application to the district court, only if such action does not require county expenditures in excess of anticipated revenue for that year. So there's another step that has to go in the process. It has to be certified to you, to be paid out of revenues that are excess revenues above your expenditures. In other words, as you know, you're required by the constitution to adopt and maintain a balance of budget. You can't spend money if you don't have, either in reserves or current revenues. You can't write hot checks.
You're opening a can of worms.
County checks cannot bounce. And the auditor is here in part to make sure that doesn't happen. So, if the judges want to order a pay raise in the middle of the year, again, they gotta do pretty much what you have to do. You have to find that there's money there to be spent, and that has to be included in the budget. Where does the money gonna come from in order to pay these funds above what you voted? Where does the money gonna come from in order to pay these funds above what you voted? And finally, as required by the Constitution, that increase is still to come in during the fiscal year, is not ordered prior to the start of the fiscal year. It can only be paid going forward. It can only be paid from the time you amend the budget forward. Article three, section fifty-three of the Constitution prohibits retroactive pay by counties. You can't pay somebody for work you've already done on prospective. Same with the auditor. And then if the judge is salaried, they have to present you with a certified order. It has to meet the requirements. You have to find the funds. And then you can amend the statute and start paying the higher salary after the budget amendment is adopted. I've attached a couple of other opinions, JC three sixty-one, that builds on forty-nine and that they can amend the salary after the budget year started, by the way, they meet the requirement. And I guess in conclusion, in JC one forty-seven, the effective date of the salary increase must be the day of adoption of the budget amendment and not prior to that happening. I think the bottom line is that you don't have the power to set the auditor's salary. Only the district judges do. And they have to follow the requirements of the law, and doing so, just like you have to follow the requirements of the law in setting the budget and the salaries under your discretion. Until you have those requirements met, until you have an order certified to you by the district clerks that meets those requirements of the law, you do not have the authority to amend the budget, to raise the auditor's salary. When those requirements have been met, then it becomes a ministerial duty. And you, if you can find the money, you shall adopt that amendment. Until they are fulfilled, you can't grant this increase if you want to.
So if I understand this right, both district judges have to meet and agree to the salary. We have to get our order from the district clerk.
Certified.
And then we certify our order from the district clerk. Then we grant the salary as set by the district judges. And we have, I'm sure we have money available and incentive on the front to pay it. It won't be a problem to amend the budget to make salary that amount. Is that correct?
Yes. We're assuming the other requirements have been met, and it sounds like they have. I would suggest to you that the amendment itself, that would be properly before you at that time, would be to amend the budget by transferring the available funds, whatever balance they're in, to the auditor's salary line item to increase the auditor's salary for that amount.
I will remind the court that an order was presented on the number twelve for not only the auditor's salary, but the two assistant auditor's salary. It had been filed in the district clerk's court records. It was file stamped. That order was acknowledged by the court, and it is in file in the minutes of the time when I. She had, uh, Juan did read the salaries aloud. She never showed it to you. I don't know if it stands.
See, Jim, and yeah, I understand. I read all that that you have there. But a lot of statutes, a lot of codes and everything, they have a broad range of decisions that you can make on them. And without the district judges actually being here to defend themselves, but I understand, I mean, what's your, what you're reading on and everything, I see exactly what you're talking about. But every, every statute, of course, you know, has a broad way, you're gonna, everybody's gonna see it one way or another. It takes a lot for different people to see it. And I would, I would like the district judge or one of them to welcome to be here to be able to talk, you know, talk on their behalf.
I think, Jim, I understand what you're saying. The buck stops here.
Yeah, I understand.
So y'all get paid a little big salaries and get the joys of running across. You're, you're correct in that, you know, you're left with the questions of have the requirements been met? And it, and as I say, your county attorney is in a position where he cannot advise you on it. You've got conflict with the finance. And you've got to make the decision. I've given you the best advice that I know, and it appears to me that all of the requirements have not been met. If, if there's a, the minutes of the proceeding of the meeting are available, if they would reflect whether both judges were there, that would be helpful to have. If there was a reporting thing at the meeting that reflects whether both judges were there, that would be helpful to have. I understand what you're saying. So not a good, comfortable place, not a place that you want to be, not a place that you ask to be. Statutes should put it up.
But you're exactly right. The buck does stop with us, Jim. And because the buck stops with us, I'm gonna make the motion to approve amending the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen budget to allow for the salary of the county auditor as set by the district judges during the public hearing October twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen, for short, to LGC one fifty-two point nine zero.
Second.
All in favor?
Fine.
If everything is hanging alive.
If everything is tabled.
Thank you.
But the judges didn't meet tracing.
It does say that. It says they shall by majority vote set, and it does not say must be present.
He voted aye.
I'm asking Jim a question, and I'm not talking to him. It's your job to report the minutes.
Eighty-one point zero zero one, local government. A majority vote of the district judges, not a majority vote of the district judges present at the hearing, a majority vote of the district judges is required.
Does it say the judge is not to be present? Does it say shall be present?
Is required to perform an act required or permitted to the district judges.
She's right.
And I don't buy it.
Our county attorney was there when she did that.
One fifty-two point oh three one says shall set by majority vote.
At the hearing.
It does not say shall be present at the hearing.
It says at the hearing, the district judges or judges shall set the amount.
But it doesn't say shall be present.
At the hearing. You can't vote to set something at a hearing you're not present at.
You already said by order.
You can't adopt the order later. You got to set it at the hearing.
That's what I'm saying. I think they had it.
What's the type of like? It's making.
There doesn't appear to be any question that both judges were not present at the
I need two out of my left hands in salary.
That's not a majority.
And the only reason that I voted the way I was, and I usually try to explain this, because this is the law, and usually, and you create an excellent point, you know, I mean, you do create an excellent point. But I would like the other, the other half to be here too, because I'm sure they, and there was a, yeah, you're correct.
You can't say what you think, Sherry, you gotta get.
It's amazing. We didn't hire him until ten minutes ago. They had an opinion.
And I'm of them. So the motion carries three, two.
Well, the motion was to accept it. The motion was to accept it.
Of the change is to the adoption of the budget. It's not retroactive, it's served. Always good to see y'all. Appreciate it. And I don't usually give my Dutch uncle talk in public, but I think it's called order. It does make for a minute. This county has a lot of problems. And you're not gonna solve them by fighting among yourselves. And you, you have control over working together among yourselves. And I must say, I'm impressed by the respect that you show each other. And I think that's an important part of working through the process. No one's ever gonna have all the answers, even collectively, that'll make a statement. But working together will make the decisions as best we can and will move forward. The other officials in the county and the other members of the community must give you their support, and they must join in that effort to work together. This county is small, but it has big problems. But you can solve them working together. You also have great opportunities. I hope that you will continue, because I think you ought, to exhibit that cooperation and spirit of working together. And I hope that everyone else will also go in and give you that cooperation. Thank you. No question. I agree there.
The next item on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, electing of an engineering firm in the bench of seven thousand seventeen forty-seven. What we have here is Ronnie Mitchell advertised for RFQs. I don't know who Ronnie is.
Ronnie, Ronnie, you said the doctor's office.
Okay. On the RFQs, we only had one application, and that was Naismith Engineering. David Entree is here. So we are looking to select that engineering firm in conjunction with seven thousand seventeen forty-seven.
That one was not in the paper already?
Yes, it was in the paper. We are pretty sure it's on the paper here. So Naismith Engineering.
Yeah, I'm gonna prove Naismith Engineering from, as a conjunction with seven thousand seventy-seven, of course.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Number ten is to discuss approve, disapprove, entering into a county information resources agency service agreement to the Florence County website. That was approved in the budget. I haven't talked. I am, but it was approved in the budget because either that or we give up the website because it's no longer for service.
We have to have it with.
I mean, if you wanna give it up, give it up, but it's no longer a free service.
We have to have it with.
And now if you don't have a website, you don't have to put it electronically. I credit you. Yes. I would still have.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Number eleven is to discuss approve, disapprove, the acceptance of a donation from the amount of one thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars to the Florence County Rotary Club in Shawnee, Ohio, and the Florence County, and it is by the Sheriff's Department to purchase evidence equipment. And that is, Sheriff?
Good morning. We received a donation from the Rotary Club in Shawnee, Ohio, to the Sheriff's Office that needs for equipment, and we're just bringing it to Commissioner's Board.
Evidence equipment?
Yes.
And I put it in there to point to Naismith County, and then you do.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Question carries five, zero. Number thirteen is to discuss approve, disapprove, converting of a previously approved deputy's position to a case manager position to bring the county into compliance with state regulations through a uniformed hiring recording system. We will do a level measure of dispatcher who has experience with this recording system and hire a new dispatcher for starting pay of twenty thousand, twenty-seven thousand, three thirty-eight, twenty-eight, special uniform allowance. And that's Sheriff.
Chief, you can help me with this. Mike Dorsey, UCR of Austin, met with the sheriff's with myself, chief, deputy, the sergeant, the secretary. And every year, the sheriff's office is required to report, there are different reports as far as like a break-in, burglary, sexual assault, you're just different, you're a county court and district court cases. And when the audit is, the, for two thirds, for this year, they're due in January. But we have to go back to the year two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve that hasn't been reported. So we're gonna have to go back to those records and have them by the end of this, by January thirty-first of two thousand and fourteen. So that's why we're asking for this, because then a lot of these, we're gonna have to go back to two years. And if we don't pass the requirement, then we, we do not get the, the grant funding that they give to the sheriff's office. And if we really need to take care of this, and that's why I'm asking for it.
I have a question, Sheriff. What are you gonna start to pay for this UCR positioning?
As a dispatcher's pay. It's a lateral move.
What she's currently making.
I don't see a problem. I'll make the motion to approve item number thirteen as presented. I'll second.
Can I ask you a question? Are there gonna be enough work for her to keep that all, or you know? I mean, is there really enough work to keep her busy?
Right, yes. We'll find some. Not back to dispatch, you know, but she can do both. I mean, it's, she's in.
Because we had the same call from the Seagulls, and they came in and they helped us, and we caught up and.
Really, there's racial profiling and.
And also, it's here every March, every year.
Okay, motion? Who's second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Number fourteen, you're done, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Number fourteen is to discuss approve, disapprove, bond for Michael Wasn't, Road Administrator. Just need justice, permission.
I'll make one for my friend. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Number fourteen is discussion action required of the Lloyd Parky Residence due to construction site for the folks' new jail. That's Joe Lloyd.
Well, as everybody knows, they're building the jail behind my house. And at the beginning of November, they began demolition. And about, honor about the week of the twelfth, thirteenth, twenty-fifteenth, they, they started breaking up the concrete, the building that's about forty feet away from my house. And I have pictures later on my laptop that I believe that they were breaking up pieces of concrete three feet thick and as big, as big pieces of concrete, as big as that table. And on one occasion, they brought in a machine that my guesses could probably pick up about twenty tons, and they were picking up pieces of concrete three feet thick, five feet wide, and fifteen feet long, sixty feet away from my house, and picking up and dropping it on the ground and was shaking my house. And I contacted Mr. Yeller, and he came over and I told him, and then he brought over one of the gentlemen, that's the Jerry, who's his name? The primary administrator of the program over there. And he came over and had guys order beneath my house, and he said, "Well, I only see one block of black." So I went underneath the house, and in the part of my house that's closest to where they were working, I have three columns that are cracked, of eight columns that hold up my kitchen, my house. Now, nothing's in immediate danger, but I have cinder block that hold up part of my house that are shattered from the shaking. And then in my living room, there's a beam that has molding on it. Because of the shaking, all the, it's been pulled away from the ceiling. And then in my living room, there's a crack, it looks like something, a magic marker or a pan or something, and drew a line down the side of the house where it was cable floated. And then, so I have a problem with that, I have, and that problem is gone because it done, they're done shaking, from what I know, okay, for the demolition. Do I have an issue?
Can I ask you, you're saying column, you talk about your cinder block.
The cinder block underneath my home that hold the house up on, on concrete runners, because of the foundation, in the ground, concrete runners. And then there's, there's probably every eighth feet, there's a cinder block column underneath the house. And in the corner nearest to where they were doing the construction. and was shaking my house. And I contacted Mr. Yower and he came over and I told him and then he brought over one of the gentlemen, that's the Jerry, who is his name? The primary administrator of the program over there. And he came over and had guys walk underneath my house and he says, well, I only see one broken block. So, I went underneath the house and in the part of my house that's closest to where they were working, I have three columns that are cracked, of eight columns that hold up my kitchen of my house. Now, nothing's in immediate danger, but I have cinder block that hold up part of my house that are shattered from the shaking. And then in my living room, there's a beam that has molding on it because of the shaking, all the, it's been pulled away from the ceiling. And then in my living room, there's a crack, it looks like something, a magic marker or a pen or something and drew a line down the side of the house where it was cable floated. And then, so I have a problem with that. And that problem is gone because it done, they're done shaking from what I know, okay, for the demolition. Do I have an issue?
Can I ask you, you're saying column, you talk about your cinder block.
The cinder block underneath my home that hold the house up on concrete runners, because the foundation in the ground, concrete runners. And then there's probably every eight feet, there's a cinder block column underneath the house. And in the corner nearest to where they were doing the construction, there's eight columns in an area that's probably, you know, probably from here to there, that much space. And three of them in that corner are cracked or one of them is shattered. It's broken into pieces and the other one is just cracked. So, it's like, I'm concerned that if the one closest to the corner would break, then it would have an area eight foot by 10 foot that would be cantilevering and putting undue stress in the rest of the house. And because of shaking, it took molding away from the ceiling and put a crack in the wall. So, I'm just bringing up all this stuff to everyone's attention because I'm sure there's going to be other things in the future that will be a problem because it's so close to the back of my house. And then, after they got done tearing up all the concrete, they created a pile of debris of trees and wood that they, when they tore the buildings down, they separated the tin and the wood of the building. And about 10 feet behind my own property, they created a pile of wood that was about 100 feet long and about 15 feet wide, about 10 feet tall. And on the 14th of November, they brought in one of these machines, it's a chipper. And they just threw this stuff into the chipper and the prevailing winds were coming from the direction where they were doing it and it covered my vehicles and, well, everything on my property with this fine cariso smelling wood chip debris, wood tree debris. And I've attempted to wash off like my decks and stuff and it, because it had some kind of oil content in it, I'm having difficulty getting it off. And then I have a above ground pool in my backyard that's 24 feet in diameter that I maintain all year long and I just keep it crystal clear. It's just a swamp now. And then to fill that pool cost me about $130. And there's like a fine layer of oil on the water as well. And then, I also had to call in, two months ago, wait, in, 1st of August, I had to buy a new air conditioner for my house. And all, you can imagine, all the chipping, clogged the coil, so I had to have the guy who set up my air conditioner come out and I had to pay $200 to clean my coil. Let's see, so we got the crack, break, the pool. And, you know, I just want to know if eventually somebody can help me out with some of these things or is it just going to say, oh, well, Mr. Lloyd.
I.
I'm just trying to make you all aware of it.
I understand. I'm not an attorney, so I can't really answer that question, but I understand your problem. You do have, seems like you have some serious problem, the foundations problem, all your residue, that's a problem that can be all over you, yours. I'm sure it is. If it's on the decks, it's all over your grass, all over yours. Where's our county attorney? Is that, what, I mean, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not, and I don't even know if we could, is that something that would be with us or is that the contractor since they had that, they had that on the contract? Would that fall under their umbrella?
May I sit down and talk to Mr. Lloyd about this, may I?
Sure. I'm not looking for any action or anything like that. I just think everybody aware of it. And, you know, I figured I better say something or they're going to say, well, why didn't you come and say something to me? Now, I can say my experience with the contractor was I went over there, well, there's more things that happened before, when they first started. I went up and I introduced myself to everybody and I says, okay, are you going to do something to make sure you don't destroy my phone line? And because my phone line went right through the property and when the AT&T guy came, he went up and talked to the city guy, who used to be in charge of the city, Mr. Pivot. He said, can I run a line through that property because the county, the city owned the property? He said, no problem. So, they ran my phone line through there and I talked to everybody about it and we're going to make sure we took care of the phone line problem before they started, nobody took care of it. They ripped up my phone line for a week. I, like, every other day they broke the phone line until the phone came. So, that was kind of a little bit of a nightmare and then there's an agreement that there would be a buffer zone between my property and where the construction was. And there was a big controversy about that because it was supposed to be 10 foot here and 8 foot here and the construction people came out and said it was only 10, 8 feet on the drawing. And, you know, I just wanted some kind of buffer between, you know, tearing down all the natural shrubbery. I mean, just to give you an idea, I used to walk back in that area with my dogs and there used to be areas back there where there was beautiful little meadows that were, you couldn't see the park or anything like that when you were walking with the dog. And they probably have torn down somewhere in the area of a thousand trees back there, which to me is like, where's our conservatorship of everything? But, you know, some architects think, let's tear everything down and start from scratch. And that is obviously the way they thought of it. They were tearing down trees that were 100, 100 years old. I don't want to ramble. I guess, so I'll sit down and talk to him and he'll sue me for different.
Is it okay if I talk to it?
Are you doing anything, Mr. Lloyd, to document what your property looked like before, after?
I've taken pictures. I've been taking pictures of everything. Is what I've been doing. When I went over and talked to Jerry the first couple times, he said, Jerry's the general head of the, he's in charge of, the supervisor of everybody. There's a guy named Danny who's in charge of demolition. And then there's another guy, I can't remember his name. He's in charge of the construction of the building. What? Sean, okay, Sean. And then Jerry is overseeing everybody and what they're doing. And I went to talk to him about, you know, when they messed up my, Danny said they were going to try and make sure that they messed up my phone line until the phone people came. The very next day, they tore up my phone line. And then when, Danny wouldn't come and talk to me.
Who's Danny now?
He's the guy who was in charge of demolition the day before when it really started. He would say, we'll stay away from there until the phone people come. The very next day, they tore up my phone line. It was like, it was like I asked, it was like I talked to him and he went like this and he turned around and forgot what we had a conversation on. He didn't care what I, he didn't care if he affected me at all. And then when Jerry came over with the guy and looked underneath my house, the guy came off and says, there's only one broken block, there's no problem.
One broken what?
One broken block.
Talk about your cinder blocks.
Yeah. And then when they started really shaking my house, I went over to go and say, hey, you know, you guys have really shaken my house. You know, instead of listening to me, I could see Jerry and Danny standing by a pickup truck and I didn't enter the property at that point because they said, do not come over here anymore. Do not enter the property. And I understood. I stood the open gate and waved at them and they ignored me and they sent a guy over and just shut the gate in my face and the guy says, if you got a problem, write it down on a piece of paper. That's how they treated me that day. And since then, nobody's talked. So, then, basically, and then I called Mr. Yower a half a dozen times. And the last time I talked to Mr. Yower, he says, you're not going to be happy here, Mr. Lloyd. There's been talk of purchasing, seeing if you want to sell your land. And I said, well, you know, nobody's said anything to me or anything like that. And since then, just for giggles sake, I looked on the internet for property in this area and I'm finding that an acre of land in Florence County that's open, the price is somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000 for an acre of land. Like, just up the street from me, on Brown Street, up toward that hill where the judge and left, that one of the judges lives, there's a three acre plot of land and it's in the, it's for sale for three acres for $300 and, $298,000 I think it is for three acres. So, the land around here is, I can't, I can't see any pot for, piece of land for me for, to relocate my house. And then I talked to the bank about relocating my house and they said the only way I can relocate the house is if I pay off the loan because the house and the land are one thing. It's not really a trailer house. It's considered a modular home because of the way it's built. It's not a regular, it has two by six wall over there. So, I guess, I'll, I'll talk to him. I just wanted to make everybody aware of my little problems. Hopefully that I can have a synthetic ear to.
I understand my apologies. I don't want a commissioners' court to be hired to contract you, but that's the way they treated you.
Well, you know, I'm irritated, I guess, because I'm walking over there and didn't like the fact that when they were picking up the 10 ton piece of concrete, you dropped it on the ground, I was taking pictures. But that's when they walked over and shut the gate in my face because I was taking pictures of them picking up that, then you drop it.
If you can get with our county attorney, you know, can discuss everything, we can bring it back.
Okay.
I would, I would like for you to talk to him because we did set a precedent. Mr. Rutman had come to us with fence damage or somebody had chains and we did if the county had destroyed something. We had previously to, I believe it was Tripp Rutman was in the email and he also was in his property, was it?
But this was, that was, but the county actually did that. These are general contractors.
Well, you know, remember previously, Mr., what was the guy that was, used to be the road guy?
Beatrix.
Yeah. Mr. Beatrix, he came over and Mr. Yower and I and him stood back there where they were starting to clear the land because they had to clear the land for the people to do the environmental study and do the remediation. And I asked them, you know, what are you going to do about the shrubbery and the shrubbery adjacent to my property? Mr. Beatrix, we're going to tear it down right to your fence line. And I said, but you can't do that because you're going to damage things on my property. Mr. Yower, at that point in time should, we'll stay away from your property until we can work out something. And then 30 minutes later, Mr. Beatrix wiped out 40 feet of my fence. And the next day, the county, all the workers, there was eight workers, they spent the whole day rebuilding my fence.
We're not supposed to waste any of our property, that shouldn't be done.
Well, no, they were putting the fence back that they tore down. They were, they actually took, they actually took the fence and they, they put it, it was right on my property line and your property that they tore down. And they also ripped down about 10 trees. There were probably, if I was to go to a nursery and hit the 10 trees, I would say it was 10 trees probably worth a hundred dollars apiece, maybe more. Because there were, there were trees about 10 or 15 feet tall that were about, you know, that bigger on. If you go look at my property, you'll see where it is. The whole property was completely enclosed by shrubbery. Now they've gone a significant portion of it down. I actually have pictures of what. Okay.
Do you want to talk to her, Joe?
Sure.
Give back.
I just, you know, I don't want to have to do the thing where I'm going to pay some attorney or something like that and it's going to be costing everybody too much money. I just want the little things fixed.
And we need to treat you right there.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay. Just a time later.
Number 16 is to certify additional revenues to be received from supplemental taxable certification. 81513, MNO 181970281, F.187, for total of 340, 315, 73. And another MNO on 11713, for total of 509496, for total of 849772069. A 513, Road Bridge Specialty, for total of 616537. Road Bridge Special 272409070, 8526404, for a total of $146,329.01. The Emergency Services District, 195097031, for a total of $24,150.65. Emergency Services District, $41,033.77, for a total of 59342. We just need to certify those.
I'm going to certify the review, the checking.
Yes. All in favor? Any approved? And number seven, number 17 is to discuss approve/disapprove funding of cell phone allowance to county auditor. It's provided to elected and appointed officials and designated employees. I don't know why they didn't certify that 61200 because that's in your salary line item. We don't have cell phone allowances anymore.
At the time that the judges did this, they specified they were setting the salary only and if the commissioners' court wanted a salary allowance, they would have to fund it.
I'm sorry, Lloyd, what was?
At the time the judges set the salary, they said they were setting the salary only. If the commissioners' court wanted to fund a cell phone allowance for the county auditor position, then the court would have to take that.
You didn't have to fund it when you put the 5% in, you just funded that cell phone then?
Yes, there's a cell phone allowance in the current budget, yes. It just makes a difference on how the actual amendment to the budget reads.
This is the same thing. This is the same.
But it's supposed to be rolled into salary. You no longer have cell phone allowance.
No, this is going to be rolled into the salary. It just needs to be.
It needs, the coordinates to decide whether they want to add that additional salary to what the judge has set as a allowance. And that makes a difference on how we amend the budget.
Which the other, like the official, one official got that too.
That should have been added to the salary. It should have been in the, should have been in this because we can't give her a raise. That's the problem. So, you're going to have to give her a cell phone allowance. Everybody else's was rolled into their salary and is now a salary item. Like, even if we decided not to give cell phone allowances, I can't take the 1,200 back to you, you, you or you because we get, it should have been set and we can't change her salary.
Let me, I'm sorry, let me, let me. Okay, this right here, you still don't have that amount in your salary right now.
Yes, I have a cell phone allowance in my salary.
It's already rolled into them.
Correct.
This isn't, just to clarify for, this isn't anything in addition to that or anything like, it's just going to keep that in your?
It will remain in the budget, but the court has to specify it. If they want to specify that that position receives evidence, it's specified as a cell phone allowance.
But we don't give cell phone allowances anymore. We did away with them on the July 1st and we purged with all the, we don't want to give cell phone allowances. It would have to be part of her salary and we can't give her a raise.
But it's already on your salary. But it's already in her salary.
So, then when they set her salary at $60,000, is it in there? We can't give her a raise, 612. We don't give cell phone allowances anymore after September 1st. We took everybody's cell phone allowance away and what they have, we rolled into their salaries. See what I'm saying?
It's already had. But, okay, I'm a little bit confused a little bit or y'all?
Is your, is that, that change is in already in your salary?
It is in the salary before today.
Budget.
But it is not part of the salary as registered by the district judge. It would need to be specified additionally.
And we can't give her a raise, I'm talking to Ray.
This isn't a raise. This is what everybody else does.
We don't want to give you cell phone allowance. Nobody has a cell phone allowance besides Brenda.
Alvin Hall. Cell phone allowances to the department.
Maybe the department has their own cell phone or something like that. When the law became in effect that your cell phone was subject to open record requests, we took the cell phone allowance away and rolled into everybody's salary. They no longer even have a cell phone allowance. Like, if you were making $40,000 a year, you were making 21, 200.
Right.
Okay? So, it has to be part of your salary. Should have been set in the salary.
So, then if the court, if the court wants to go with that description, then the court could do a departmental cell phone, such as they did for 911 and special projects.
Well, why would we do a cell phone?
What?
Lots of people.
I didn't stutter, so I would, I have a problem. Every department that has an eight to five job that's not on 24/7 call, why would you even need a cell phone?
Because I'm not always in my office. Sometimes I'm at a conference and my assistant needs to get ahold of me. Sometimes I need to talk to Barbara because I need something on the agenda or, I mean, it's just.
I know how I feel about the cell phones anyway. I'm sorry, but I just.
And I think it's in your salary too that you have a cell phone allowance.
Well, I told me.
We took away the cell phone allowance.
No, right, right.
Yeah, I was going to look at you, right? I'm sorry, folks. Maybe, maybe it's easy for y'all to comprehend this, but for whatever reason it is, I'm just losing this one here. And I apologize, Lloyd. I'm just, I'm just losing it a little bit.
Just ask the question, is she going to get extra money or not?
It's not extra money because I would.
But it's in your salary.
It's already there.
But it's already there. So, it's.
It's already there, but if, the court's going to need to take action whether the position has a cell phone or not because the judges. because the judges set my salary at sixty thousand, and it does not specifically include...
Well, of course, the position should have that allowance for the cell phone, because we did that for the other one, so of course, you should have it too.
We can't change her salary except by the district judges.
What I'm changing, what I'm changing her salary.
So it would have to be specified as a cell phone allowance to be paid through payroll, or a departmental cell phone allowance. That would just be an expense like my regular landline telephone is through the department.
And that would, I wanna be, be fair with everyone else, the way we did for everyone else, be fair with you to do it this way.
Well, it wouldn't technically, because then I wouldn't have the social security, retirement, et cetera, added to it like all the others did.
Would you be, would you be presenting your cell phone each month and making a check for reimbursement for your cell phone? Is that what you were gonna do?
No, it's done as a departmental cell phone. It will, I will get a cell phone specifically to the department, just like we did for...
There's one in the sheriff's office. Delup, did you ever pick that phone up for emergency management?
No, ma'am.
You can have it, Luana.
So then we'll let be billed to the county auditor.
It's already, it's already being billed to the county, and it'd be, we can have it reversed and billed to the auditor's department. We're already paying for it. Is it coming out of sheriff, coming out of your budget?
Yes, ma'am.
And then it can come out of whatever budget. It's already departmentalized for Karnes County for a cell phone.
I understand that, and it's, it's budgeted in the sheriff's department right now, that is my question. Dwayne, will you have additional people at some point in time in this fiscal year that you need that cell phone?
That one was clearly earmarked for me.
Yeah, but that one wasn't actually...
It is.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, but that's not on the agenda item right now?
Well, we can change it. I mean, it says discuss, I mean, at the next meeting, it says discuss refunding of cell phone allowance, okay? We can't change her salary, but I can give her a bump. Then it needs to be on there.
But it's in the budget now for separate? No?
No. It's shift department, it's signed to shift department.
But your office.
Can you take an election?
Yes, ma'am.
No action for now.
Number nineteen is to discuss approve, disapprove the county treasurer's report.
Well, wait, we need to go back to eighteen. Although y'all approved amending, we need to clarify the amendment, so it's on the record. The current fiscal year budget for the salary for the county auditor is fifty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. It will move to sixty thousand. The FICA and Medicare is currently at forty-two.
Luana, wait, timeout. I think you have to go from order to order. You can't go, we adopted the budget. Should you go from your previous order to this order to go ahead and clarify it, from district judge's order to district judge's order?
No, we're amending the budget, the district judges amending it.
Well, the original...
What's in the budget is fifty-five eight, and so therefore to go...
But that was, that was five percent of over what you were making. What was the initial, what did you make before the five percent? Just for clarification purposes.
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
It was fifty-two something.
But that's, because we're amending the budget, and the budget as filed currently is fifty-five eight. So the salary line item will move to sixty thousand. The FICA and Medicare will, currently at the forty-two sixty-seven seventy, for the position, it will move to forty-five hundred and ninety dollars. The retirement is currently at seventy-seven twenty-six point ninety-one, and it will move to eight thousand, three oh eight fifty. The total required minimum is five thousand, one hundred and two dollars and eighty-nine cents.
And technically, it does make a difference, because we gave her a raise, and we found out we weren't supposed to give her a raise. It's supposed to come through the district judges, so it does make a difference. It goes from order to order.
It doesn't make a difference, because that's how y'all adopted the budget, and it's the...
Right, and we still need clarification of order to order, Luana. And number nineteen...
Did you consider leaving the paper?
Is, uh, discuss approve, disapprove the county treasurer's report.
The last time that we met, we did not have a forum. I left, I wasn't here.
Definitely, because I have it, why?
I have it right here. As long as it gets. I'm not sure what they did with all this stuff.
That much? Would you like to look at one?
If you left them up here, they were left up here.
Well, I left them under. I don't know what your secretary...
There's a bunch of body up here.
Why? Got the same one, they're still there? Nothing's changed. I just, the cover sheet, it has the day date on it, and it's only what's changed. And just to make a little sign note, when I give my treasurer's report, there needs to be an auditor's report at the same time. Just that way, you should verify what mine is, so the auditors should live on your own social log.
Usually y'all take a picture of the same screen, so there's not much...
Correct, but sometimes there's discrepancies that we need to make sure we both clarify. But we can still approve mine, and she'll just approve mine in December. I'll do mine, I'll prove it in November, so then this, and then I'll do mine, and then I'll replace them. I don't wanna sign the wrong ones. We have them round. I'm ready to move. That's hard to top off these though.
Why, I'm just, can I have a hundred check coming?
I mean, from other people, we've been getting us checks.
Have we bounced a check?
Oh, well, technically, yes, because we haven't had, um, the check doesn't go back to the person, the vendor that we written it from. We get notices from the bank, that we just have over gone funds.
Because we're invested.
Because we're invested. It's not because we don't have the money. I mean, we're not running in the red.
Right, right.
So we're not running in the red. The perception of wanting people to think we're running in the red is...
Seventeen all count, we have... Negative, because whenever they spend the money, they want us to turn around and ask for the money, and they say, "Give us the money." There's usually a sure three week, a month delay in between that, but that's just your rules.
Because I've never known us to bounce a check. I mean, if we ran in the red, or they're out of money. The next item is payment bills.
Hang on for a second. They are replacing our flooring today, or this week in our building. We are closing the building at one today, because the front part, with all the tiles coming up, all the dust, we didn't want, we didn't put notices in the paper. And Friday, the building will be closed also, because they're laying the new tile, unless they pull up the tile and they find a big crack, so hopefully that's nothing. But just let everyone know on that. And if you sign up for the biometric screening, that is tomorrow, so don't eat.
When is the helicopter thing, the airlock?
I mean, the, uh... Yeah, that's, that's, that's any, sixty-five dollars a year, or six dollars, whatever paycheck I think is what it is.
And that's for the community also, right? If the community wants to come by?
Yeah, yes, but they'll have to pay directly a check right then and there.
That's right, and I understand that. We can do ours.
By the way, protections if you want to.
But I don't think there's anything in the papers, so can you guys, see friends, family, whatever, tell people?
And we can have to come back again if we need to, it's on that.
Okay. Thank you, bye.
Thank you.
The next item is payment bills.
Should we take action on treasurer's report?
No.
Uh, we've...
I'll make the... I'll say it, ma'am.
All in favor?
These are the bills that should have been paid on November twenty-seventh, when there was not a forum present. Luckily, I happened to see an agenda on the website to have the bill's dates amended within the system to allow fulfillment today. Page one, courthouse phase one A, total expenditures, one thousand, sixty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. Those are invoices that pertain back to fiscal year thirteen. That's why they are out of the unencumbered fund balance. You go to page four, middle of the page, are capital highlight expenditures, for the EMS building projects, sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. For the annex parking lot, two thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixteen cents. The elections equipment balance, eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Courthouse phase one A, out of this year's budget, two hundred and six thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-one cents. And the jail project, out of this year's budget, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seven cents. You go to page six, you will see road bridge expenditures, of the total, seventy-six thousand, two dollars and sixty-three cents. Fifty thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and forty-six cents is attributed to the bond. And on the final page, page ten, our total expenditures this bill cycle, one million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-four cents.
Sorry, why use Lee while you were gone? These same bills, I'll show you guys. When you were in training?
Yes.
We use Lee again. We used Lee last week while you were in training.
The large amount on the jail, that's six hundred and twenty dollars, mostly their bond. They've done demolition, there inside all kinds of...
Also on page three, a lot of memory down, is our participation packet for this fiscal year, forty-eight hundred and forty-one dollars to the municipal defenders. That's where if we happen to have a capital murder case here in the county, we would have, we would have council prior to this.
You know what, and I got it timed, that I did, that I'm off it on this one, we do have a grant, another one, I mean, um...
In the general bills?
Uh-huh, I did it. And I printed the resolution, but I might have done that after. It's not, we have twenty-eight or thirty-eight thousand dollars.
And they can't stop us?
It's not on there. I must have got it plotted up already, I'm just... We just have to remember, when we're setting these December meetings, we have got to have meetings. We can't wait that late to have it, if y'all just wanna have one. The fireworks depart, fireworks posting always has to be moved in the second week for the fireworks department, for the people that own fireworks to get notifications to order their supply. That's why the local government code has it, so they'll have envelopes.
In your hands?
And they haven't, so that's why we did it today, assuming, you know, the seventeenth, probably fourteenth, they don't have those notice for equipment.
Make the motion to pin those, I presume?
On favor. The next item, we've been just given.
I make most good, ma'am.